Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the roll.
Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum, takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anybody in the audience have any comments to make tonight that are not on our agenda that they'd like to share with us? I don't think so. We'll move on then to approval of the minutes for February 22nd, 2022. I'd like a motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Any questions or comments? None, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The minutes have been approved. It takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications they'd like to share? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a communication from Bob Saritella on the 1900 block of McAdams. AT&amp;T's been doing some work out on the easements behind his property. And they were, they'd done some work in the fall and then were back again, you know, re-digging and things. And they weren't getting, receiving any communication that they were coming up. That just the contractors were just out in a bag, out in a bag carriage. So we did talk to Dan about it and they think they've resolved that issue, I think.
You know, this is probably the second or the third time that I've heard about a complaint regarding AT&amp;T in that area, regarding the way they leave the backyards, the unfinished work. It really would be nice if we can, and I thought we tried making contact before with them regarding this. In fact, Chris made phone calls and got them out there to do some repair work for a couple of the homes that were unfinished. But here we go again, it seems like with another issue, Dan.
You know, part of the problem is, is, and again, whether it's ComEd, AT&amp;T, Comcast, with today's infrastructure, everything is underground. Almost every single house in the city of Darien has what's referred to as a utility easement. The utility easement is anywhere from 10 to 20 foot wide. While it's part of the homeowner's, property owner's property, it's granted through a plan of subdivision that allows these companies to come in there and first of all, do the work. Unfortunately, there's a lot of timing with this type of work. What type of work is it? Is it an emergency? Emergency, we'll refer to it as ComEd, a ground fault. Well, to give notification out is almost impossible in that particular case. On the larger projects, ComEd, for example, which they contract out to a couple of other companies too, whether it's H&amp;H or whoever the case is, notification is usually given. AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T, is it a new request for a service because their main box is in that residence yard, but the actual service might be kitty corner from the house, but that's where they have to tie into. Comcast, similar situation. Then again, is it an emergency? Is it a, is it a ground fault where they have to replace the wire? I think we've all seen cables that are strewn over the ground and left there for a month, two months. But it's not necessarily that property owner's cable. Again, that's where the service comes from and that's where it goes back to the service provider's yard, if you want to say. The rest, usually those cables, depending on the type of the year, time of year, if the ground is frozen, you're going to see it there all probably three, four months because you can't trench in that type of weather. The best we could do is, you know, restoration. Typically, the restorations are followed up for the fall project in the spring. Now, spring, if it's a wet spring, easements are basically stormwater utility easements at the same time. So restoration becomes another issue in itself. We try to make, you know, every time we get a complaint, especially with, you know, again, in this particular case, we still haven't found the answer out. I did contact the resident, I was waiting for his phone call to get a little more information in terms of, you know, make sure he understands what the process is. And we're waiting for the External Affairs Director from AT&amp;T to get back to us specifically in this regard. So it's not just a matter of giving someone notification, hey, AT&amp;T is going to be out there tomorrow. It might not be out there tomorrow, whether it's via direct connect or some type of door hanger. If they schedule it for a week from now, is it going to snow? Will there be snow cover? Will the Julie markings disappear because of inclement weather? There's so many different factors. It's almost no different than us on a water main break. Okay, there's a water main break, you know? We try to tell people, once we get out there, hey, we're going to be shutting your water off, whoever's affected. But, you know, in many cases, a buffalo box repair. We don't know until we get out there, especially if it's an emergency that water, a resident needs water shut off. So next thing you know, we're digging. We may be digging across the street at the same time. Best thing we could tell you and tell residents is if it seems like it's going on too long, whether it's the restoration, whether it's a cable over the yard, whether it's a pedestal that's knocked over, that's rusted, call us. We're, you know, we're very good about getting to the right people and not just calling these 1-800 numbers, which I think we've all had bad experiences with them. You know, we get to the source and it's done in a timely fashion, pending the weather, of course.
The one thing I have to say is with Nycor. When Nycor had to come out and do some maintenance along the pipeline on Green Valley, they came out, we had a meeting with the residents and Dan was out there. We met with the residents, went over exactly what Nycor was going to do. Nycor came out, did a phenomenal job, had to take some trees down, cleared some brush out. And the neighbors, and I went back afterwards and the neighbors were ecstatic. They were so glad they got rid of that one big cottonwood tree that they were thrilled. So if you do it right, it can work very well, but you need that communication. The only thing I had to do, I had to move a resident's portable fire pit off the top of the, of the gas pipeline and put it back into his yard.
Off the 36-inch gas main, yes. So, and those are projects, those are projects that's.
Fortunately, he didn't have it hooked, tried to hook it up into it.
But though, you know, those are projects of larger magnitudes and ComEd, whether it's tree trimming, cable replacement, and even AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T and Comcast don't do really a lot of cable replacement. The fiber, the, you know, the fiber that's slowly coming in, there's permits on that. And I know that they, AT&amp;T in this particular case, they send out door hangers. So again, to your point, you know, I think we received two calls in your ward over the last six months. And then they're unique, they're unique in nature.
Yeah, and Nycor did their work in, in the winter here purposely so they wouldn't have a lot of trenches in the ground and that type of thing.
Sure.
So they were very, very constant of that fact. Because a lot of the residents, even though it's Nycor property, have taken care of it like it's their yard. So it's very well manicured and stuff, but Nycor did a phenomenal job.
Dan, you made me think of one thing. We get a lot of questions at City Hall as there's a locate being done by maybe in the rear yard. And residents will call us to say, what's going on there? Many times we don't know that because, right, it just, it's maybe the contractor didn't tell us.
We'll know through the Julie system because as we're part of the Julie system, you know, it depends when a resident calls. We probably get maybe 10, 15 Julie locates a day. You know, so the guys go out there, they don't pay attention unless it's supposed to be permitted work of some sort of the, you know, usually it's a utility repair. We don't know who it's affecting. We know where we have to locate because that's where they need to dig. So, and there's a phone number that resident, I don't have that in front of me, but there's a phone number that when Julie comes out, that residents have the opportunity to call to find out what type of excavation or what type of work is going on.
I just have a hard time believing that whether it be AT&amp;T or a third-party contractor, they can't put something on a door saying, we were here.
We did. With Bob's case, they put a door hanger on.
See, I didn't hear about the door, I didn't, this is the first I'm hearing about the door hanger.
Yes.
My understanding was it was, the work was there, he knew who it was, and then I got the call. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Any other communications? Mary?
Just an update, that utility pole along Frontage, right by the Villas of Carriage Grains, I saw some trucks there last week thinking they were going to get ready to, because it just seems to be sagging and sagging. And nothing's being done. They've got the caution tape around it, but any update on that? Because the resident did verbally ask me what was going on with that.
We can find out. So they may be outsourcing them, maybe they're waiting for a larger pole. And their ComEd is, over the last two years, has really been proactive in replacing a lot of poles.
Yeah, no, they replaced a bunch of poles along Oldfield, but that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure why.
Since the fall, okay.
Yeah, let me double check. So they, maybe it's an equipment issue or additional equipment's going to be placed on there.
Okay.
Let me find out.
And I know you and I talked about the fencing still, the two big areas along Frontage that are still, you know, someone's, the front end of their car is still sitting in one of the fencing areas. So, okay. So I dot, just get on them again?
Yes, that's all we keep doing. They got work orders, they got, you know, an ongoing contract. What that ongoing contract means, if they have watchmen or what is the required, we're going to have to find out now that they have a new contract in place. What is the response time on a down fence?
It used to be a lot faster than it is now.
Yeah, they've had some problems, unique problems.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I received communication from Mr. Ken Petrofsky from Farmingdale Terrace Number Three. He used to watch the meetings on AT&amp;T U-verse. And he mentioned to me that no longer he's unable to watch it. So I mentioned to him that, correct, on YouTube, but he was wondering if anything changed on AT&amp;T Universe by chance.
We wouldn't necessarily be notified.
Okay.
We don't have a franchise agreement with them. It's more, they are regulated more by state law.
Okay.
But I think, would think a call into them from the residents, they should be able to tell them. They could have switched channels or so, I'm not sure.
Okay. And then also, he mentioned that on Nantucket, there was a tree that was knocked over. City staff or municipal services came and corrected it, but there's still a hole out there. He believes they might have dug an initial hole and there might have been something like a gas pipeline or something underneath and they moved the tree over, but there's some plywood that just needs to be cleaned up, so.
Correct, yeah. I'm not sure if the excavation involved was, was ComEd and/or.
Okay.
On Nycor, so we'll follow up on that. It's been there since the fall, late fall, correct.
Anything else? Okay. It takes us to our mayor's report. I really enjoy opportunities like this. We can bring in a group from our community to honor tonight. It's the Hinsdale South State Champion Speech Team. Speech teams from Hinsdale South have a history of making appearances at the IHSA State Speech Tournament. And this year, it was on February 18th and 19th in Peria. The Hornets won the state title behind first-place finishes by Darryl Mondain in the original comedy event. Cameron Chamberlain and Kate Cianci in the dramatic duet acting event. Additional highlights from, for the team include Darryl Mondain and Grace Zengros taking second in the humorous duet acting event. And Matthew Leonardson earning fourth place finishes in the extemporaneous speaking and impromptu speaking events. Cameron Chamberlain also placed seventh in the prose reading. Destiny Prater, or Prater, I hope, was seventh in the poetry reading. Grace Zengros took eighth place in the original oratory. And Izzy O'Neil was 10th in special occasion reading. The City of Darien would like to congratulate all of these talented students, along with head coach Danny Youska and assistants Abby Overman, Terry Arain, Mark Davis, and Alana Waterman on this incredible historic event. Congratulations, guys. Danny, do you want to come forward, talk a little bit? Maybe you or Abby or. Why don't you bring, why don't you bring a couple of the students up there with you? Maybe they'd like to talk as well, since they're speech, state speech champions.
Well, thank you, Joe, and thank you to the rest of you for this incredible honor. Behind me are the ones that are the deserving individuals. They're all students at Hinsdale South. A little about speech team. We start the summer prior, the season. So we started way back in.
July?
July of 2021, when we were in a state of chaos still and thinking we were going to have to, you know, maybe do another virtual season. We were performing in masks. We were very, a little discouraged about, you know, what could possibly happen. And Hinsdale South District 86 and the state really championed behind the activity and made an amazing experience for these kids. They started competing in November at the, during the invitational season, traveling and competing to schools all over the state. And then in February, they start the state series. In the first three weekends, they go through regionals, sectionals, and state. And in order to make it out of our sectional, which by the way is the hardest sectional in the state, they had to place in the top three in their respective event. And these individuals really did an amazing job. They're so talented. A lot of them are seniors graduating from the program, graduating from high school. A couple juniors still left. And we are so thrilled to have our very first championship in I don't know how many years at Hinsdale South. So I'm sorry I did not bring the trophy, but a lot of them are sporting their medals. And we're still on cloud nine and we thank you so much for inviting us today.
Danny, could we have all of them come forward, stand in this section here facing that way? And Alderwoman Sullivan wants to get a picture. And I'd like to join them for that picture.
Great job, everybody.
Photoshop it in.
Awesome, great. Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Hey, Bill, if we.
Do your homework.
If we weren't able to see this anywhere, I'm sorry, if we weren't able to see this anywhere, is it on YouTube? Any of the events or?
Actually, so we have two individual champions in here. These two won a dramatic duet acting event. And this fellow right here won the original comedy event. And those will be public, I don't know when, on YouTube. You can buy it, you can buy a live stream of it, but I think that does go public for free at some point.
Now, where is, where is Darryl? Who's Darryl?
Darryl, it's Darryl.
That's Darryl? And who is Grace?
Grace could not be with us.
Okay. That's why she didn't mind if I mispronounced her name, right?
She actually got it right.
How about Destiny? Is Destiny, okay. And Matthew Leonardson?
He's not here as well.
He's not here? Izzy O'Neil? Nice to meet you, Izzy. And who else do we have? We had Kate and Cameron Chamberlain already. Is Abby here?
Abby Overman.
Hi, Abby, how are you? All right. Well, thank you, guys. We're really proud of you and we love having these opportunities. I'm just glad you were able to come in. And I want to thank Alderwoman Sullivan for making contact with you, Danny, so we could get you in here tonight. Thank you very much, guys. All right. City Clerk's report, Joanne.
No report this evening, thank you.
City Administrator's report, Brian.
I have no report either, Mayor, thank you.
Takes us to Department Head Information Questions. Any questions for Chief Thomas or for Mr. Gombek? Wow, that's wonderful. Treasurer's report, warrant number 212221. Treasurer Corrin.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 212221 in the amount of $147,108.98 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended February 24th in the amount of $279,750.88 for a total to be approved of $426,859.86.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? None, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Kenny. Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Warrant's been approved. Takes us to standing committee reports. Do the aldermen have anything to share with regard to their committees? Alderman Belzak?
Yes, the Municipal Services next meeting will be on March 28th, Monday at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Police Committee meeting is, next scheduled meeting is, can be held on Monday, March 21st, 6:00 PM across the street in the police training room.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
The next Economic Development Committee meeting will be on Thursday, April 7th at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. Tonight's Administrative Finance meeting was canceled because we've spent the last two weeks prior with the Admin Finance Committee of a whole reviewing the fiscal year '23 budget. And I'm pleased to report that that review process has been complete. And there will be a public hearing of the fiscal year '23 budget on Monday, April 4th at 7:00 PM. And the City Council will, that evening, vote on the budget. And then as far as another committee, the Citizen of the Year Committee put on a spectacular event last Friday evening honoring 2022 Citizen of the Year Lou Mallers. And it was a sold-out event at Alpine Banquets. It was such a festive evening and I'm so grateful to be there. And many people in the room tonight participated as well. And I just wanted to do a special shout out to the hard-working committee that not only spent the time reviewing and selecting the Citizen of the Year, but putting on a great event. Chairwoman Bonnie Cussera, along with Linda Barowiak, Jimmy Gottsinger, Jerry Cussera, Carol Mallers. And yes, I'm the liaison, but I don't do anything except give them creds because they are an amazing group. So thank you to them. And hopefully the trend will continue and we'll have lots more people endorsed and recommended in 2023.
Start, start looking now. Don't wait till, don't wait till the end of the year, just keep looking.
And also, we've been advertising for a Harder Daring Award. So those of you who want to nominate somebody for Harder Daring Award, the form is on our city website. Just go there and it's a brief application. And this is for someone who's done something outstanding that we'd like to recognize as a major contribution to our, our community. The other thing is we have a committee this Saturday. Our Darien Action Committee is meeting from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. For those in the room who are unfamiliar with the group, we have about 25 organizations within the city that are meeting. They have been meeting, this will be our third one. And we're moving along. We've made tremendous progress with regard to the development of an electronic community calendar. And this Saturday, Lisa Pure and Laura Hoffman from MuniWeb, who are our website developers, will be making a presentation in terms of how it might look. They're going to give us different designs. And just to let you know, I mean, once, we're almost at the point where we're ready to have the community groups put their information into the calendar. We might have this out by April, I believe.
Yeah, by the middle of April's, the target.
And this is something every organization in the city will be represented on. And we will have it, the link, they'll have a link on their websites. We'll also have a link on our website. And you can go in there and you can click on a date and you could see all the activities taking place that day in the city of Darien, the different organizations. And to me, that's a real plus because people will know when there's going to be a conflict. But they'll also know that when they schedule, that they're scheduling on a date that the boosters may have something or, you know, that one of the other schools may have something. So we're going to be adding groups probably as time goes on. I talked to Marty Schaefer and he apologized. He said the VFW will have representation there. I talked to Dean Rotkin from the Historical Society. She will be there this weekend as well. So that's taking place this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Indian Prairie Library. Alderman Belzak's been part of that. Alderwoman Sullivan's been part of that. So we're really excited about where we're going with this.
And the community calendar will sit, be hosted on the city website, on the homepage. So, and it'll, it'll be very, you know, right now, when you look at the calendar on the city website, it's all municipal events, which will still be there and they'll, they'll be tabbed that. But then, community events will, will, will be a part of it.
And it'll have, and it'll have a really nice design. There'll be a, I think there's one program she showed us where there'll be a section to the Farmington Hills.
Yes, in Michigan.
Where they had like data on the side which shows you.
Yes, you can click on it and get more information. There'll be, you can, you can submit a photo if you want.
That's really the, been the result of this, this action team. But that's it for the standing committee reports. Questions and comments, agenda-related, anyone in the audience? I see, I see none. Takes us to old business. And there being no old business, we'll move to the consent agenda. Bear with me. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance number O28-12 in the amount of $304,025. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance number O1118 in the amount of $386,300. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving the 2022 City of Darien zoning map. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a motion authorizing the following roadside ditch maintenance projects. And we're showing Bentley Avenue, Andrus Road, Eleanor Place. And it looks like an alternative pending budget, which was approved as Crest Road, Crest Road, Dan?
Correct.
Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract for the 2022 roadside ditch maintenance regrading program between the City of Darien and Vion Construction Company for the layout and replacement of storm sewer pipes and structures and grading in an amount not to exceed $486,300. of storm sewer pipes and structures in an amount not to exceed $484,670. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract with SKC Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $227,580 for the 2022 crack fill program. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Darien and the County of DuPage for mowing along county roads and rightaways. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Willerbrook regarding the purchase and installation of a four-way traffic signal at the intersection of 67th Street and Claretton Hills Road. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code 2022-2023 Motor Fuel Tax General Maintenance. Item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the professional design services related to the surveying of 67th Street and Claretton Hills Road for the four-way traffic signal project in an amount not to exceed $9,500. And item L, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Kenny Lindgren-O'Hare and Albuna Incorporated for the professional design services related to the design, engineering, bid documents, and construction observation for the 67th Street and Claretton Hills Road four-way traffic signal project in an amount not to exceed $20,500. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. And the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda's been approved. Under new business, we have one item, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing for the purchase of a four-sided modulated aluminum trench box from Lee Johnson Sales Company for $12,171. Motion to approve. Shower, seconded by Kenny. Any discussion? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The new business item's been approved. Questions and comments, announcements of a general nature? Do any of the Aldermen have anything they'd like to share? Mary?
I just want to let the community know and the council know, to save the date for Darien Arbor Day is set for Friday, April 29th. It will be held at Westwood Park this year, which is over by the Park District Main Building on Fairview, and it will be at 9:30 that day, and it'll be extra special this year because there will be a commemoration in honor of really the, the woman that made Arbor Day a reality in Darien, Kathy Minardi.
Thank you. Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, I just want to keep people informed that there is a Darien Center Cast School District 66 meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Pleasant View School or via Zoom. You know, once again, as the potential for tax increases is on the table for $500 to $750 per year per household. So I'm encouraging people to attend. I will be there, and I will be speaking.
Anyone else? I'd like to congratulate the Lions Club on a successful pancake breakfast yesterday. They probably had 1,200 to 1,300 people who walked into that gym and were served a nice, delicious breakfast meal. This is a fundraiser for the Lions Club, and the money that's raised by this event goes back into the community through their Halloween party and the Fourth of July parade, which are not money-making events. So the money that we make with this, the money, that money goes to those activities. But I wanted to congratulate the Lions Club on a well-run event. Jim Jankowski was the chairman this year, and Jim did a great job organizing that. If nothing else, motion to adjourn. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.